Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 2025 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the Town of Carmel. The way we operate is, well, board members' names are in front of you on the dais. We have a short board this evening, two members down. Mike Carnaz is our co-enforcement officer with us tonight, and Greg Filshetti could not make it, who's our town council. So where we operate is I'll ask you to come up, I'll swear you in, you'll present your case, tell us what your parameters and situation is. We'll question the board for any questions or answers and, or comments, and then we'll adjudicate. But that will happen after we close the hearing on each particular case. We've asked that no input be put forth once the case is closed, and we'll give an opportunity to the public if anyone wants to be heard on any case. We'll come in, we'll swear you in, come up, swear you in. Just if you're outside and not an applicant, and you want to speak on an application, please leave your name, email address, phone number, and home address on that board that's on the dais. We all, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just for all.
All right. Our first case tonight was a holdover from last month. Application of Jack Stewart for variation of section 156-9, seeking a use variance to legalize the existing sale of boats and supplies on residential property in the LDR zoning district. Property's located at 330 Overlook Court, Carmel, New York, and is known as Tax Map 77.23. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Joe Tock. I'm an attorney. I'm here with my associate attorney, Will Tock.
Okay, I don't need to swear you guys in.
Okay, our office is at 963 Route 6, Mayapack, New York, and we represent Jack Stewart.
Okay. Press through your case.
The application before you is for us to request that the current use of the residential property at Jack's home, which is 330 Overlook Court, that we be permitted to continue to use it with the pre-existing non-conforming use. Jack bought the property with his wife in 1965. They raised three children there, and in 1982, he opened a business, which was selling boats and boat supplies and bait. He's been operating that business since 1982 on that property. I provided for you several things, one of which is an addendum to the original application, and I've highlighted the law on this matter. People versus Miller is the Court of Appeals case. I hope everybody has that.
Yeah.
And basically, the law states, and this is the Court of Appeals, the highest court in the state of New York, saying that the non-conforming use in existence when a zoning ordinance is enacted, as a general rule, is constitutionally protected and will be permitted to continue despite or notwithstanding the contrary provisions of the new ordinance. So we're looking to maintain or continue the use that Jack has used on the residential property. The court further held that the property interest affected by the current ordinance, if it's too substantial to justify its deprivation, it should not be continued. So Jack has been running this business for more than 40 years. Currently, he is 88 years old, and he's here with his grandson, who is stepping in and who will be running the who has been running the business with him, and you'll hear from both of them today.
Okay.
I also provided for you photographs as well as the survey. And on the survey, you'll see it's a residential property, it's a large parcel, and it's a corner parcel. There's no question that if you drive by, you'll see boats. The business is run Tuesday to Saturday, 8:00 to 3:15. Much of the work is done inside the garage. It's a two-car garage. No vehicles are in the garage. That's where all the maintenance of the boats are. He does have, and on the survey, if you look, I use the word, the letter B as part of a indication where the boats would be. I use the letter T for trailers. So if you look, as Overlook Court is right off Croton Falls Road, if you make a right on overlook, you see the house, very large driveway. They maintain usually two or three kayaks in the driveway and several boats. On the right side of the property, they have boat trailers. And what they do is they sell the boats, they put them on a trailer, and they bring them to the reservoir. And they've been doing this for more than, more than 40 years. Behind the house, there is a, there is trees, and there is a stone wall, and he has a number of boats resting upon one another against the stone wall. When the Court of Appeals stated, "The work of a substantial character had been commenced prior to the amendment of the code, and enforcement would therefore cause serious loss to the owner," that the regulation should be declared inoperative. Now, in this case, we, we have reviewed profit and loss statements from Mr. Stewart's business, and for the last three years, '21 to '24, we've indicated he's grossed an average of $131,000. And if he's not permitted to maintain his business, we contend, or respectfully request, that he'd be suffering severe financial hardship as a result of this. In addition, the, the New York zoning law and practice as of December of '22 talks about existing business uses. And it states that a business which has been built up, quote, "over the years, may be continued as a non-conforming use, even though it is located in a district, a residential district like we have here, where such use is prohibited." Such an existing business is substantial under the Miller case, which I just referred to. Where a use may be classified as substantial because it consists of a business built up over time, it is unnecessary to further determine if the substantial improvement of the realty is also involved. The questions that the court asked, did the use predate the current zoning code? And the answer, of course, is yes, because this business has been there since 1982. The second question the court asks is, did the use continue without any significant interruption and without any significant change in the type of use? And that's also yes, that he has run this business for more than 40 years. There was a case in Long Island, a more recent case, Second Department, which is our appellate division in, in this area. And there it said that the non-conforming use of the, and this was a boat storage facility, actually, could continue as a right as it did not substantially change or expand and wasn't interrupted. And we have the same terms here. And there, they indicated that the respondents, who was the, the boat company, demonstrated they would suffer pecuniary loss if the non-conforming use ceased. And in addition to, to the law that I provided, I want to tell you a little bit about Jack Stewart. So he's been in business for 40 years. He's the go-to guy when it comes to anybody who wants to buy a rowboat on any of the reservoirs in the area. He's also supported our community. He has run fishing clinics and fishing programs for this community for more than 40 years. At the end of the presentation, I put down community ties, and he's volunteered his, his time and his money because he contributes and gives to the children that go to these programs. And by his estimate, it's been over 3,000 children that have gone to these fishing clinics. And there's one coming up next weekend and the weekend after at Sycamore Park. He provides the fishing gear, the tackle box, the tackle, the worms, and instruction, and has been doing this for more than 40 years. And the last several years, he's noticed that not only is he dealing with the children, now he's dealing with the parents who have children. So he's now a second generation of his volunteerism, really giving to our community. In addition to that, besides the Sycamore Park classes, he has, he has taught, given fishing classes at Veterans Memorial Park in Kent. He has donated boats to the Town of Pleasant Valley, Dutchess County. He actually donated a boat to Brewster High School for their use in the Spring Musical. He is, most importantly, he has authored what's called the New York Fishing Directory. Now, this is the Southern New York Fishing Directory. This is a directory that everyone who's an angler uses when they, when they want to fish. It tells you where to fish, what reservoirs, what are the hours, what size fish, and Jack's been doing this for more than 30 years. So it's our request, and we'd like to also have you take a look at the photos. I submitted photos of the, of the property, and it shows the boats. There's no question, there are boats there. The first photo was the front of the house. We've got the trailers on the side of the house, the kayaks in the driveway, and boats in the back. And one of the things that I asked Jack and Brendan about, what is much of the work? It's not loud work. It's, it's not work that's going to upset neighbors other than the claim of, of the visibility of the boats. Okay? Occasionally, there is hammering. The hammering, they estimate is less than an hour per day, and a lot of that is done within the garage itself. It's a giant two-car garage. It's really a workshop. It's not really a garage. It's the workshop for the business. So with that, I, I did want to add today, which I didn't do, which, just to give you a little flavor of what some of these fishing clinics are, I've got photos of the fishing clinics, and it really does impact our community. If you can give that to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one for Mike, please.
All right. We appreciate and commend his community outreach in teaching fishing. We're surrounded by lakes in this area, and it's, it's a good thing. Personal experience is, I've been in this town for my whole life, and I've never not seen that property without boats on it. So I'm wondering how this came up now, after all these years?
Dennis got a, Dennis got a call.
Okay. So, all right, there's an issue. But, I mean, personal experience just lends to that. It's always been there. Now, if we were to go forth with this or allow this, and, you know, we'll see what the board has to say, but what's to prevent every square foot of that property being covered with boats and material? That's where I think I would be worried. You know, again, this is a fixture that's been around my whole life. But like, if we limited it to what you're showing on this drawing right now, would it need to get any worse or get less?
Well, certainly, I respect that. We, we would respect if you say to us, three boats in the driveway, max.
Yeah.
Three trailers on the side, max. We, we can narrow, you know, the application is general, but I can narrow it subject to your recommendations. If you say, we want, we want this narrowed down, you know, we, or you want it strictly as the, you're right, the survey shows three kayaks. You don't want me to, you'd approve this, and then tomorrow I have 13 kayaks.
Exactly.
I understand that completely.
The good thing is it's a use variance, so you can make conditions. It's not interpretation where you're stuck with.
Any conditions, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mike, I couldn't hear you.
If you make an interpretation, then you can't condition it. But if you give a use variance, you can put conditions on there.
So we are seeking the interpretation. That, that was the addendum.
You're seeking a use variance also.
Right.
Can't do it on, I'm sorry. You can't condition an interpretation, so you would have to go for the use variance.
Okay.
Which you did show those criteria, Joe.
You did, yeah.
And, and, you know, I'm okay, I'm one board member, but sort of as presented on the drawing, as submitted, so that, I think that restricts it. It's not going to get any worse.
But if you could put numbers on it, so there's something we could, and I don't mean that he would do more. It's just if we could put numbers.
I'm just thinking out loud.
Yes, absolutely.
Let's hear, you done your presentation?
I'd like to have Brendan and Jack say a few words, if I might.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Are there any other questions for me?
Do you guys have any questions for council?
You may want to speak to your client and find out what's the max that they would have at any time, and then offer that to the board, so you don't condition it to half of what they normally have.
That's a good idea.
So I did speak with my client, and what I've indicated on the survey is, if that's the max, that's the max. Now, and by the way, I bought the property, you know, I counted the boats, and this is, this, this is what I came up with. So if you, I mean, I'll be much more specific for the record. I listed five boats in the driveway, because the day that I was there, there were five boats in the driveway, and there were three kayaks in the driveway. There were three trailers to the right of the house, on the right side. That's where I put those Ts.
Yep.
And then behind the house, stacked against the stone wall, we had four boats, three boats, three boats, and three boats.
So you have 13.
Thirteen, yeah.
Maybe do 15 to, in case there's a sale at the DEP or whatever they do. 15 behind by wall?
15 by the wall, five in the driveway. Do we count the kayaks as boats?
Three kayaks. Well, they split them out, so keep it with.
I separated them.
Yeah, just keep it separate this way.
Okay.
Three kayaks.
Three kayaks.
And three trailers.
Three trailers.
And three trailers.
Okay. I can live with that.
Hours, hours of operation?
Oh, that's a good one, too.
Absolutely.
What's your normal hours?
Hours, I think it's on there. It says 8:00 AM to 3:15 PM.
Eight to four.
Tuesday, okay.
No, but do an extra in case there's somebody there.
What happens if he's running late?
Okay. I'm sorry?
What happens if he's running late, Joe?
Okay.
If they say eight to four.
Eight to four, yeah. Tuesday to Saturday is when he's open. So they're closed Sunday and Monday.
Joe, these are not only rowboats and kayaks, there's also powerboats that could be on there as well.
No, there are no power, he doesn't sell powerboats.
These are all reservoir.
No, these are all, these are all reservoir. On the reservoir, you can't have a powerboat. So there's Croton Reservoir, Boyd's Reservoir, only the rowboats.
Forty years ago, I went and I was looking at a bayliner there. So I know.
So we can make that as a condition, right, Rose?
Yeah, we can limit it to the type of boat and size.
We'll say non-motorized boats.
Non-motorized?
Yeah, non-motorized is fine.
Okay.
That's absolutely fine, non-motorized, yeah.
All right. Does your client wish to speak?
Sure.
If Jack wants to speak, bring the microphone over there.
Yeah, you can take the mic. All right, just tell us your name and address and raise your right hand.
Brendan Vreeland, 85 West Shore Drive, Carmel.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you.
Brendan, Brendan, how long have you worked with your, with your grandfather?
Joe, those mics come off if you want to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, give it, give it to Mr. Stewart.
Okay.
Yeah, swear Mr. Stewart in.
Yeah, let me swear Mr. Stewart in as well. Mr. Stewart, you have the same address?
Absolutely.
Don't get up, don't get up. I can stay up, all right.
You raise your right hand, Jack. You want to swear Jack in also?
Yeah.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So Brendan, how long have you worked with your grandfather?
16 years.
Okay. And how many employees are there besides yourself and your grandfather?
At most, two.
Okay. And is that two all year round?
No, seasonally.
Okay.
March to November.
And where is most of the work done when it comes to repairing the boats?
Driveway and garage.
Okay. And are you okay with the limitations we just discussed about the number of boats and the fact that they're non-motorized?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And the financial numbers I gave, those are the numbers you gave to me, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I just want to.
What is the largest size of, of the rowboats that are there, or kayak or what have you?
Absolute largest, 16. We mostly carry 14.
If we limit it to that, you should be safe, right?
Absolutely.
All right, because, you know, we don't want a 20-foot or, you know, motorboat like we just spoke about being, that's what I'm thinking, that, you know.
They're mostly John boats and V-hulls, right?
Correct.
Just regular reservoir boats.
Yeah, correct.
Yes, all reservoir, John boats and V-boats, yeah.
And all aluminum, Rose, if you want.
Yeah, they're all aluminum boats and no motors.
Put those restrictions.
Okay. Any other questions for Brendan?
Nope.
Okay.
I have one.
Yeah, sure.
Brendan, do you have any plans on expanding the business?
Not at this address.
Not at this address. Okay.
And we're gonna restrict it enough anyway, Rose, I think, so if you have a fault. But that's a good question.
If they decide to go bigger, they're, it's gonna have to eventually go to commercial property.
It's got to.
That's what'll end up happening if they get big.
I'm gonna have Jack say a few words.
Sure.
Jack?
Yes.
How long have you, how long you been in business?
Too long. Forty-something years, I know that.
Are you okay with the restrictions they explained, the number of boats, and of course, the size of the boats?
Right. On the reservoir, you can't use a boat more than 14-foot.
Right.
And they have a minimum of 11 and a half feet.
Good.
Okay.
Good. And do you want to add about your, what you've done with the community with respect to the fishing clinics? Tell us about that. I know, you've told me about it.
Yeah. Well, what, for, how many years are now? It's 20, 20-something years.
1987.
1987. We run, I, I lost my son years ago. At age 18, he got killed right in front of my house. Up in, maybe people that live here remember the thing. It was just an accident. He was working on his car, and he moved the jack, started using a, a heavy-duty garage jack. He used the car jack and was underneath the thing, and bingo, 18-years-old, the thing. I came back from a meeting with the DEC, and I found him there, and I didn't realize. The radio was going so loud, I just turned that radio later. I went out, and I turned the radio off, and he, the tree, the tree had fallen down and killed him instantly. But that was something that.
Sadly, we know it too well. Mike and I went to high school with him. Jack was a, a good guy. Your son, Jack, was a good kid, and it was an unfortunate accident. We're sorry for your loss.
Yeah. He would never recover from something like that.
Can you tell them a little bit about your volunteer work with the clinics? How many people you've, you've worked with?
Well, we have, we've been getting 100, minimum 100 kids a year. And 4H was involved in it at one time, and they took care of some of the recordings of getting the kids signed up and everything. Now it's being done in, here in Mayapack. And they came in for three or four hours in, in the morning, usually started at, I think, 9:00 in the morning. And they learned how to cast and everything else. And then we went down at the lake. The lake is a little bit different than where they had it. And they fished. Only one big problem was there, there was only, same, you know, it was all catch and lease anyway.
Mm-hmm.
But there wasn't a lot of fish there in the lake. It was just natural. So we gave them all rods and reels, and, you know, they ended up with, between the fishing tackle and that, they had a package of, it probably was $80, $90 worth of stuff. A kit. We still do it. We have one coming up in, this, not this weekend, next weekend, Saturday and Sunday. And then I think it's, we have so many people on that. They're coming in for the following weekend. We even had adults that wanted to get into the derby. They wanted to run one for the adults, to teach them how to fish. But.
That's good stuff.
So we have, and we just ordered the rods and reels and everything for the kids. And there are some really good fish, fish that are caught there. I think the pictures are awesome to show. And.
Anything else you want to add? Anything else you want to add?
That's, that's pretty much it.
Any questions for Jack?
We appreciate your, your community outreach and support.
It also keeps them young.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jack, you know, I just want to echo the sentiments of the chairman and member Balsano, that's, that's great work, all the tutelage you give to young people and the veterans, and that's, that's a lifetime of, that they'll have, fishing, it's great, great, great resources around here to use, so.
Yeah, we've had.
You've helped that.
Kids that came in here to learn how to fish, they're now, have kids their own, and they bring the kids, still doing it.
You're the kid, Mike.
That's how I like to introduce them, because we have some, some of the best fishing in the whole state is right here on these reservoirs.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know if any of you are fishermen, but, I mean, there were trout, ten, twelve pounds that are caught, every year, one was, I think, nineteen pounds this year.
Amazing.
Large-mouthed bass, small-mouthed bass, crappies, white perch, yellow perch, you name it, it's in here.
Awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
That's great work.
Thank you very much, any other questions for me?
No, I think that's it, right, the board?
I think we covered it.
All right, at this point, I'm gonna open this case to the public, if anyone wishes to be heard.
No, nobody complained, but not here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the public hearing then, on this case, do I have a motion?
Motion to close.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Look. All right, new application this evening, application for Diane Ocello, for a variation of section one-five-six-nine, seeking a variance for the shed's location. Property is located at seventy-three Baldwin Lane, Mayapack, tax map sixty-five-point-one-zero dash one dash two-four, so the code requires or allows forty-foot frontage, what's provided is twenty-three feet, so a variance of seventeen feet is being sought. Good evening, folks, please state your name and address for the record.
Diane Ocello, seventy-three Baldwin.
Just do me a favor, turn the mic down to your mouth, this is being recorded for minutes, everyone, so we need to speak clearly and distinctly into the microphones, please.
Diane Ocello, seventy-three Baldwin Lane, Mayapack, New York, one oh five four one.
And sir?
David Connor, seventy-three Baldwin Lane, Mayapack, New York.
All right, raise your right hands, please, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
I do.
All right, thank you. How long's the shed been there?
About three years.
Three years.
Three years, was there something there previous, or does it?
No.
It was new, okay. You got a tough situation, because you have a corner lot and a very shallow lot, unfortunately. I was out there the other night, and, you know, it's pretty well-screened, I don't know if anybody got a chance to see it, there's like trees between that and the road, so, you know, it goes well with the property, but there's no property you can purchase to bring this into conformance, right, your land locked there, there's no property available, you can't buy anything. Looks like you showed on the, on your drawing that there was septic fields over to the other side, so that precludes you from that area as well. If you had to remove this, or move it to conform in the property, it'd be pretty costly, right?
Sure.
Couple thousand dollars, would it get?
It's a decent sized shed, too.
Three thousand dollar foundation, you know, and then get somebody to, with the equipment, to move it around, and I really don't have the room.
You talked to all your neighbors, anybody have any issues or concerns?
No, nobody, everybody drives by.
Forget nothing but compliments.
Okay.
Seriously.
Yeah, it is a nice-looking shed, it's big, too, so what's in there, lawn equipment, pool stuff, and?
Yeah, pressure cleaner, you know, tools.
Yearly decorations.
Yeah, she decorates a lot, you know, for each season.
For holidays, okay. All right, board members, any questions?
No, I was over there, you have a real shallow backyard, so there's no real room to fit that shed, it looks good, good foundation on it, stone, the timber, it blends into your whole property, nice.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
The pool is, I thought that the pool ran parallel to the side yard, but this shows it as angled, and it looks like a temporary pool, is that a, is that a?
Deflated blow-up, it's like a blow-up pool.
It's an above-ground intex, we bought it at the, um...
Job lot.
Job lot, a few years ago, number of years ago, I just, took us a little while to get it up.
So does it come down in the winter?
No.
No.
It stays all the time? Am I wrong, if this is?
Yeah, originally, I had diagonal, but then she didn't like the sun not hitting it enough that way, so I just shifted it, so it got more sun to keep it warmer.
As long as the permit, is the permit approved for that, where it is, then it doesn't really matter, right? The permit, if the permit's approved for the pool, it doesn't really matter the angle.
I mean, this survey may not be the same one that was issued for the, I don't know.
Right, as long as the permit's approved for where the pool is, it doesn't really matter, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
But if it's, yeah, if it's a temporary pool, does it, does it need to comply?
All pools, but pools are only ten feet from the property.
Yeah, it's different.
That's the, easy part.
All right, so, anything?
No, no questions.
All right, anybody in the public wish to be heard on this application? I'll look for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Aye.
Like, glow knee, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys.
All right, I'm sorry.
That's okay, still counts.
Same thing.
I closed the hearing, so you guys, do you have anything else to add, or no?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you guys, it should be a short meeting, so if you want to stick around and hear our decision afterwards, that's fine, otherwise, you can call Mike, or...
Dawn's out tomorrow.
Dawn's out, Rose, in the planning office.
Rose is off tomorrow, too.
She's off, too? All right, Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday.
Call me.
Or call Mike.
Call Mike. All right, application of U B Putnam LLC, U B Properties, Five Below, for a variation of section one-five-six dash one-four-two dash H two, seeking a variance, variance for permission to allow for twenty-eight-inch letters of signage, where twenty-four inches allowed. Property is located at eighteen forty-four dash nineteen thirty-six, Route six, Carmel, and it's tax map fifty-five-point-one-one dash one dash four. So the code allows twenty-four inch high, and you want to provide twenty-eight inch high, so a variance of four inch height of letters is being sought.
The new code's different than the old one, I'm sorry, I didn't check, it used to be square footage, now it's maximum height and seventy percent alone to your store, so.
Okay.
I don't know.
Seventy percent of what?
Where the square footage was.
Seventy percent of what, Mike?
The front of the store.
Oh, seventy percent.
So if you have a two-hundred-foot-long store, you're allowed to have a hundred-and-forty-foot-long sign.
Oh, wow, we need to talk about that.
But it can only be two feet tall.
What about the height? What about the height?
Two feet.
Yeah.
All signs, two feet.
Building signs.
Building signs.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Hayes, owner of Signorama in Danbury, Connecticut, thirty-five Eagle Road.
You're representing, okay?
Yeah, so I'm representing Five Below.
Raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, bring us through your application, what derided this, what brought you to this decision?
Yeah, so just before I get into that, Michael's point, I goofed up a little bit here, so I may have to come back next month, I'll let you guys determine that, but the twenty-eight inch-high letters was our original proposal, based on the old code, that would have fit the square foot, fifty-square-foot, I think, limit, and not needed a variance. What Five Below actually wants to do is thirty-two inch-high letters, which is a eight-inch variance. I, so this was the backup plan that I submitted, I got the wrong paperwork.
You went from worse to worser.
Yes.
Yes, but to Michael's point, you know, it's the, you can go super wide in the space, but there's that two-foot height limit, and so the shop, this is in the Tops supermarket Plaza, so you have Tops on one end, Harbor Freight Tools on the other end, and they're right in the corner. Their concern is corner spot, a little more difficult to see, and also, you've got a long plaza, right, so making sure that people can find them when they get in. Roughly twenty percent of car accidents happen in parking lots, people are confused, trying to figure out where they're going, and so larger signs, you know, helps with that.
I'm gonna beg to differ on that point, because being there the other night, that's the only proud element of facade, of the rest of the whole complex, so I don't think that's the case here, and if you guys got a chance to get out there, there's pictures, right?
Yeah, I drove by the other night, but maybe to save you time, if you come over thirty-two, well, I'm gonna ask for twenty-eight, so why don't we just do that, call it a night, because I'm not gonna let thirty-two go, because that's a little bit more substantial. So let's say twenty-eight, go with that. I'm only one board member, but I'm telling you how I'm thinking.
And along those lines, now, Mike, if you can clarify again, the height of the sign, total height, behind the letters?
No, it says the letters can only be twenty-four inches high, and they can be seventy percent of the length of the building.
But from the bottom to the top?
Twenty-four inches.
So how does a twenty-eight inch letter fit on a twenty-four inch sign face?
It doesn't, that's why it's here.
That's the variance.
Oh, you're saying it would go top to bottom, yes, so it's a...
So you see what I mean, like, every, every, so, so many feet, there's a gabled peak, you have a big square, pronounced facade, you're three, four columns wide.
And it's blue, it clashes with the colors of the mall, it'll be very easy to find.
Yeah, so, you know, people identify with the brand as it is, so I think you're gonna be asking too much if you're going to thirty-two, so, you know, Silvio pointed it out, I'm sure everyone here agrees, I believe.
I think what they're trying to say is you may want to keep your application going now.
Sure, so we'll keep going with the twenty-eight.
There you go, that's the right answer.
I would say, you know, their other thing is, is you're staying in line with Tops and Harbor Freight, similar signs there.
Exactly, I was gonna comment that...
Yeah, but your store's half the size.
In your favor, I was gonna comment that proportionately, right, Tops is the anchor store, here's Five Below, you're, you're pretty much like, maybe the third or fourth biggest store there now, where compared to, so you're in line with those signs as they are now, and they're pre-existed before the new code change, so let's, let's let sleeping dogs lie, and I think we'll keep you at twenty-eight. And it's proportionate to your facade, that...
It is, it's neat.
I mean, those other signs on that, I mean, is there anything over twenty-four inches, like the pizzeria and the foot and thigh?
No, there isn't, no.
You know, I didn't have a tape measure, but...
The code was totally different before.
Okay.
So if you had a big K for Kmart, as long as the rectangle around the whole thing was under forty square feet, you were fine.
Yeah.
It didn't matter, as long as it's eight-by-five, or four-by-ten, or two-by-twenty, you were fine, you were allowed forty square feet, now it's...
And that was recommended by the consultants?
Yes, it was written by the consultant and never changed.
I'm just trying to see where that derives from, but that's a conversation for after the...
Yeah, I think there's a memo coming to the town board from us on that one.
So, all right, is, I think we're okay with that, right? Board members, anybody have any other input?
No.
Does anybody in the public have any input on this application? More questions? All right, I'll look for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Chris. All right, final application this evening is for number four, three fifty-five Huguenot Incorporated, for variance of section one-five-six-nine, seeking multiple area variances. The property is located at eighty-five Glonida Avenue, Carmel, and it's tax map four-to-four-point-fourteen dash one dash six. Wow, Will's not here tonight, we got three, four applicants from Carmel, wow.
Yeah, really?
He's our resident Carmel representative. Good evening, guys.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Frank, don't need to swear, you in?
Thank you.
Consultant gonna be speaking, or client, or?
Yes, so, Mr. Zembrano, hop up, I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, three fifty-five Huguenot Inc., we're also joined by the corporation's principal, Mr. John Zembrano, and Mr. Adam Thieberg of Insight Engineering.
Okay, would you guys, yes, state your names and address for the record, please, speak into the microphone?
John Zembrano, two Parkers Lane, Patterson, New York, one-two-five-six-three.
All right, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right.
Adam Thieberg from Insight Engineering, three Garrett Place, Carmel.
All right, raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thanks, guys.
All righty, so the property is located at eighty-five Glonida Avenue, Carmel, it is known as tax map number forty-four-point-one-four dash one dash six, it consists of a lot that is roughly twenty-nine-hundred square feet total, and it is located in the town's H M C Hamlet Mixed-Used Zoning District. The property is currently before the town planning board for site plan approval, and we are before the zoning board by the planning board's referral for a number of area variances. The first is lot area, the code requires ten thousand square feet, the applicant provides two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty square feet, requiring a variance of seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty square feet. Second is for lot frontage, the code requires one hundred feet, the applicant provides eighteen feet, requiring a variance of eighty-two feet. Third is for lot width, the code requires seventy-five feet, the applicant provides eighteen feet, requiring a variance of fifty-seven feet. Fourth are two side yard setbacks, the code requires ten feet, in both areas, the applicant provides zero feet, requiring a variance of ten feet each. Fifth is rear yard setback, the code requires twenty-five feet, the applicant provides point-seven feet, requiring a variance of twenty-four-point-three feet. Sixth is for two-way aisle width, the code requires twenty-four feet, the applicant provides eighteen feet, requiring a variance of six feet. Seventh is for lot coverage, the code permits lot coverage to be sixty-five percent, the applicant provides ninety-five percent lot coverage, requiring a variance of thirty percent. And lastly, is a variance for parking spaces, there are a couple of different calculations that are used, but the code requires a total of five parking spaces, the applicant provides for two spaces, requiring a variance of three parking spaces. In support of the application, you are provided with a full completed Z B A application, a site survey, proposed site plan map, a copy of a fully executed easement to permit the property's encroachments onto the property of the Mount Carmel Baptist Church, which I'll address in a little greater detail in a bit, an applicant affidavit and support, and a memorandum of law. A brief history, the applicant purchased the property in December of two thousand and twenty-three, the parcel had been owned by the Carmel Fire District since nineteen fifteen, and its most recent use was related to the Board of Fire Commissioners. It's my belief and understanding that the building has been in existence, as it currently sits, for nearly a hundred years. After purchasing the property, the applicant applied for site plan approval to house his automotive accessory installation business. There are no proposed changes to the structure, merely a change in use. Part of the variances are the existence of two encroachments onto the property owned Part of the variances are the existence of two encroachments onto the property owned by the Mount Carmel Baptist Church. This is the historic cemetery that's next door. There is an oil tank, and then there's also a, a fire escape. Both of those encroach onto that property, but there is a fully executed easement agreement to permit them to be there that has been signed off by the Mount Carmel Baptist Church. They have not been recorded yet, and that's obviously pending hopeful approval tonight, and then final site plan approval. Another thing that I would like to note, to get out of the way now, when we can answer any questions at the end, is that the Mount Carmel Baptist Church signed off on this application. So you'll see in your package that there's a signature page from the chairman of the Board of Trustees of the church. It has come to our attention that because the encroachments are on the other property, it will require a separate application by the church. That application will be forthcoming. I expect it to be on next month's agenda. And at the very end, we can talk about the practical ramifications.
So Frank, we'll proceed with this case tonight, and if approved, it'll be contingent upon approval of that application, just so the board members are aware.
Greg had no objection with that.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So, so you know, the church has signed off on the application. There will be a forthcoming application from the church because the items that are on their property but on our structure are also too close to the property lines. So we'll be seeking those variances as well. And hopefully, when all is said and done and everything is approved, knock on wood, there will be a recorded easement agreement to permit those items to remain there. Lastly, the applicant was aware that many of these variances would be needed. Those variances were raised by the planning board during their site plan approval process, and that's why we're here tonight. As you know, there are five criteria when determining whether to grant an area variance. First and most importantly is whether, if granted, the variance will cause a negative impact to the character of the neighborhood. Second is whether granting the variance will cause an adverse impact to the environment. Third is whether the variance is substantial. Fourth is whether the need for variance can be obviated. And lastly, whether the need for variance was self-created. For the foregoing reasons, I argue that the requested relief should be granted. First, if granted, the variances would have no negative impact to the essential character of the neighborhood. The property has been in this configuration for decades. No changes are being sought to the structure itself as it sits. These variances are required to bring the lot into conformity during the site plan approval process, and the proposed use is permitted in the zoning district. If granted, I argue there'd be no negative change to the neighborhood. Second, if granted, there would be no adverse impact to the environment. As previously discussed, there are no improvements, additions, nor modifications, including impervious coverage to the, the property and the structure. The applicant is merely seeking a change in use while keeping the lot and existing structure the same. If granted, there'd be no change to the site at all, and hence no adverse environmental impact. Third is whether the variance is substantial. And in this case, it is, but substantiality is not dispositive. Prior to the applicant's ownership in two thousand and twenty-three, the property had been owned by the same entity since nineteen fifteen. Unfortunately, I can't opine as to their wisdom of why the lot was created in that particular shape or why the building was created to tuck to the property lines, but it does, and it's been there for many, many years.
And Frank, there was no, when the FD owned it, there was no site plan for that?
No, so they bought in nineteen fifteen, and I assume they predated code with the structure itself.
Didn't have a building, I mean, a, a planning until, I think thirty-nine is the first one I found.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the property card states eighteen eighty, but we know that the fire department bought it in nineteen fifteen. So I think that it's safe to say sometime between nineteen fifteen and nineteen thirty-nine, the building was built the way that it was.
What did, what did they use the building for?
So they had their meetings of the Board of Fire Commissioners. I believe it was used as a town of Carmel police substation at some point. Where, you know, they could go there, and there was a radio, and I'm sure some facilities to use and whatnot. But the last that it was used was for the Board of Fire Commissioners, and they would host their meetings there. So we can get to the proposed use and what the traffic looks like and that kind of stuff, but certainly going to be less than what they were already doing there. The lot is an odd size and shape, and the structure was really shoehorned to fit it. So although substantial, I think that when you balance it with the other criteria, it's not a disqualifying factor. Fourth is whether the need for variance can be obviated. In this instance, it can't. There's no feasible way to move the building to bring it into further compliance, nor is there the ability to purchase any of the additional property from the surrounding property owners. There's the parking lot, there is the oil and energy company behind, and then there's the historic cemetery.
You don't want to disrupt that.
What? I see, no, this is bad stuff.
Yeah, that's bad juju. We don't want to get into that. And then lastly is whether or not it was self-created, and in this case, it wasn't. The applicant purchased the property, and the structure is in its current configuration. It's been in existence for decades, and we're not seeking any changes to it. So again, going through site plan, this is something that's needed to clean up the file, and that's why we're here. So in conclusion, I argue that we meet the five criteria of the area variance analysis and respectfully request the board grant the relief as requested. Myself, Mr. Thieberg, Mr. Zembrano are here for any questions you may have.
All right, what is the proposed business that's coming in?
Automotive accessories, so like, uh, remote starters, electronics, that kind of stuff.
Stuff like that.
Yep.
You do any engine automotive work in there?
No.
That would not be allowed.
Because it'd be like multiple cars or anything.
That's all accessory and?
He made a statement to the planning board, I believe, that you're by appointment only, correct?
Yes.
Which is why they were okay with sending it here for the variances, because they were like, how with one parking spot? Can you do that? You know, they, they were limited with what they could do.
Yeah, it's no off, off the street business, it's.
Yeah.
Right.
So the, the, it'll actually be two indoor parking spaces. And then everybody else would fend for themselves on Glonida Avenue like the other businesses.
Right.
But again, by appointment only, as of now, Mr. Zembrano was the only employee, owner-operator. He would have one car, and then he would bring in one car at a time, do the work, send it out, bring another one in.
Two employees. I mean, two people at once.
Correct, yeah.
The customer and the owner.
Yep.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so when you say it's approved for two parking spots, those are the indoor ones, or indoor and, and then two outdoor?
Two indoor total.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, so nothing outdoor?
Nothing outdoor, correct.
So that driveway coming into the garages is part of the property? No, that's?
So the driveway coming in is part of the property. It does, it does stop where the chain goes up to block it from going into the other parking lot. There is a restriction on it that says that you can't park there, correct? We don't know where that restriction came from or why. And again, if you remember, it is the substation, there were always cars parked out there. So we're looking to just use the two indoor spots. There is room outside, but there's a deed restriction that prevents it.
If you park there, you can't get in or out, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
You wouldn't have two-way aisles if somebody was coming in, and the car parked there, you'd be stuck.
Just bring the mic closer.
You could fit like three cars coming in and out. You could line three cars aside, next to each other.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to take mirrors off.
No.
It's eighteen feet, you can't.
That's more work for him.
At least, at least two for sure, plus extra room. Depending on how big.
You have a little more than twenty-five feet on west there.
That's tight.
It's tight.
Our two-way aisle requirement's twenty-four.
Yeah.
And we got eighteen.
So there's, it's tight, there's enough room to maneuver, but it's tight.
If somebody parks there, that would jam it all up.
Yeah, and that would block the doors and everything, too, so.
You got to get the signs. You park it here, I break your face. All right, all good from the board? Anybody from the public wish to speak or be heard on this application? All right, I'll look for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, guys.
All right, there's no further input on any application this evening. As we adjudicate, for Jack Stewart, I'll look for a motion.
That's a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
As discussed, five boats in the driveway, three kayaks on the other side of the driveway, three trailers, and fifteen boats along the back wall.
Restricted.
Hours of operation, eight AM to four PM?
Tuesday through Saturday.
Tuesday through Saturday, no motorboats, and sixteen-foot maximum-length boats.
Yep.
So say all that. You have to say all that.
Or you could say as Mike stated.
As Mike stated.
There you go.
It's your motion, that's the only.
All right, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?